To the zoning code, this is just to adopt it for short term rentals in the city. This does not impact short term rentals in the county. This is just to make sure that the two codes align so that we have a unified zoning code. You have the option if it's on for agenda review now, but if you'd like to do this at a later date, we can certainly do that. There's not a time sensitive issue to this other than that the two codes right now are not aligned. And so by adopting it, we would get them back into alignment.
All right, let's continue.
Item D is the presentation on the add and end building options, which we discussed in staff yesterday. That will, there's two parts to that. One is Tanya for the BOCC viewing audience will just give a summary of the three options again. And then the point of decision though, for this meeting is the Murphin Building. There's contractual obligation there to either move ahead with that building or not. And the commission will have to come to a vote on that. Item E is the emergency shelter discussion that we deferred away from today. We are visiting, Lindsay and I are visiting with you, all of you this afternoon to give you what we know as of today. Now we can have further discussions into the future, but right now that's a placeholder for this item for next week. And then Board of Bids and contracts under consent. Item G is the Transportation Grant for Aging. It is an annual grant that that comes up every year to provide rural transportation program for seniors. Item H Rusty is here and he talked about, I think he's briefed you all on this agreement that the county will have with City of Cheney. And Kevin's here too. The EMS chief is here that can, will create space for us in the Cheney Fire Facility or at EMS vehicle. Item I. And Lindsay can talk to this as well. And again, we briefed commissioners on this. This is your approval to allow WSU to spend some of their 1.5 mil levy dollars on the renovation and refurbishing of the Susten Stadium project. And now I'll look to Brent on this grant, if there's any questions. Item J is a activation packet under Sedgwick County as grantee for foreign trade zone regarding WATCO transloading. And Brent, maybe you should just talk about this girl briefly.
In 2021, the commission approved a application for WATCO transloading to establish a subzone under the foreign trade zone statutes. This is actually in Parsons, Kansas. And this is the second step of that process there now. They've defined the area that they want to do the work in. And this is the activation packet that they'll be bringing. So they've already paid their activation fee. And part of this process will be for the chairman to sign a concurrence letter to go to the foreign trade with the Customs and Border Patrol so that they can activate their subzone under the foreign trade zone statutes.
Item K is a request for transfer of budget authority from fleet acquisition contingency. This is, I'll let Lindsay talk about it more if there's questions, but this is year end movement of money to account for increase in costs of fuel, parts and labor across the industry in regard to fleet. Anything else want to add to that?
I think the only other thing that commissioners need to note is because of how long it's taking things to get done. We're also doing this transfer to allow us to get movement on five ambulance remounts because it's taking much longer than usual to get those done. So that's another reason why we're having to access it.
The rest of it is routine business. That's it for regular agenda. There is a single, we did have to throw a fire agenda together for the single item under consent. We have, I think we talked with commission during the budget process to reclassify mechanics. And we have the fire chief and CHRO have worked together and come up with that reclassification. And that's what this particular item is to get the mechanics pay up to a level that you can keep them. That's it for fire agenda.
I can, I share, I have a question on new business C back for Scott. Could you clarify exactly what we're doing with this here?
Yes, sir. So with the unified zoning code, both organizations have to adopt what's in there. So at this time, the city of Wichita in September adopted amendments to the zoning code to address short term rentals in the city of Wichita. So this is an item for this, for the county to consider those same changes that again are focused on, they're focused solely on the short term rentals in the city.
So this is nothing to do with unincorporated Sedgwick County short term rentals or?
That is correct. It has nothing to do with unincorporated county short term rentals. So if you choose to take that item up in the future, you certainly have that discretion. This is just to get the codes in alignment.
Do we need to take that item up in the short term future? No pun intended. Do, is this something that needs to come before us? So we have uniformity with what's going on in the city of Wichita? I think we talked about this last week.
Yes, in terms of this issue for the city of Wichita, I believe it would be advantageous just from as a planning director to ensure that the unified code is in fact unified and consistent. Now, in terms of is there urgency to address short term rentals in the unincorporated county? Well, I would, I would turn and look, you know, look to you all for that answer. So.
That made me last week, we kind of gave you directions to look at two different things.
That is correct. Yes, sir. That is correct.
We, we had to come back to it in the future.
We, we actually had a meeting scheduled for yesterday, but Scott was at city council.
Seven hour city council.
Sorry.
So do you have any, can you give us any indication of when you think you'll be able to come back and give us any sort of direction on, or at least some more information on, on that, on that matter?
Um, you know, this is a fairly recent, I mean, the short term rentals have been ongoing with the discussion about the event centers in the county. However, I, what I would ask is just for a little bit more time to direct staff and get feedback from them. Cause it's been a heck of a last two, couple of weeks. So we've got research ongoing right now about event centers in the county. So then our next task would be to add on to that, the short term rentals.
Okay. Sorry. Just want to make sure we're moving in that direction. Thanks, Scott.
Yes, sir.
And just to clarify, this does not impact any of the other 19 cities in the county?
No, that, that is correct. They have their own zoning. So this is, and in the case of again, the county and the city, because they share the unified zoning code, that's, that's the reason why. But this is directed solely at the city of Wichita for short term rentals there. Yep.
But I know, I know I had a number of questions last week at the staff meeting and so not really content necessarily to do any more than that. But I think that's, that's probably okay on this agenda, in my personal opinion. But any other questions on that or any other item here? Just on the financing, the 1.5 mils of the issue. Yeah, it's a very, it's a very interesting, interesting topic. And I guess in a sense, we're, we're kind of collaborating with WSU, working with them. Good partners essentially maybe help trying to help them out in some way. Is that going to be understood very well by, I mean, is this requiring an explanation at all for the public to know what's going on?
I do not believe so, but I will defer to the commission if you would like us to. Essentially what it boils down to is the county levies 1.5 mils on behalf of the city too. And gives that to WSU, the Kansas Development Finance Authority is actually going to be the entity that issues the bonds. We're just going to pay the debt service. It's already contemplated in the budget that WSU submitted to us. That was a part of the 2024 recommended budget. There's not a lot of discretion that we have over how those funds are used. And so if you want us to talk through that publicly, we sure can. But I don't know that there's much for the public to understand that hasn't already been disclosed through other processes.
I believe the cities haven't taken action to.
They are, they are taking the, up the exact same resolution.
Any other questions on those items? I just want to, just to comment more about anything. Is it, I had a plat a couple of months ago that kind of got my attention. And again, just to notice here on item M, this is just a non controversial. I've never seen one discussed. I've never seen anybody testify one way or the other on a plat. It just seems like it's all those things we're trying to get more red carpet, less red tape. I would like to propose a few, will we try to minimize the timeline? By having to put this on a, on an agenda and voted on a consent agenda without any controversy ever. Seems like we ought to be able to find a way to, to slim down that, that process a little bit. The idea I came up with was again, as long as the commissioners are aware of it, no one has a request to put it on the agenda. There's no, nobody from the public that wants to, you know, address it. I would, I would like to see us consider authorizing the chairman of the, of the board or the mayor of the city, whatever, to sign plats on behalf of the governing body. It's just an idea. It might cut a few weeks of process out of these plats. Time is money. Go ahead.
And Commissioner How to that question, we didn't look into that and came to the opinion that that's something that we would not advise. We don't know that we can do that. I think it's a good idea if it can speed up the process. There is a concern about whether, I think ultimately it came down to whether the board could delegate that authority administratively in that regard. There is some concern that we may not be able to. So I, I think that if you want us to look into it further, if the board does, we can do that. That was Kat Rodriguez who used to work in our office, looked into that, did research that, that item.
Again, I might, I probably like to continue the conversation a little bit on the side, but we can talk about that later. Thank you.
All right. We, since we have you here, that's it for agenda review. But Tanya, we have, it's the season of town hall time. We have a solar town hall coming up next week. Tanya is going to talk to the logistics of. And then I, Sarah, Commissioner Lopez mentioned this this morning, the psychiatric hospital, part of our component. To go public with that and to hear out the public in addition to the survey is to do a town hall there. And that will have to be in December. That has to be before Christmas to get that done. So somewhere in the December 8th through December 15 range, there'll be a second town hall on that particular topic as well. Just to put that on your radar. Tanya, you want to talk about?
Actually, I'm going to defer that to Scott. Scott has been doing a lot of planning on the town hall. So I'm going to let Scott speak to that.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the open house. So this is scheduled for next week on Thursday. This is predominantly a PowerPoint that was prepared for MAPC advanced plans. We reviewed this with them. But it's to give you an overview about what to expect at the open house slash town, town hall event. So in terms of the first page is just two slides introducing it. The next page, then on, on page two, you can see the process in terms of what's been laid out. This is available on the webpage. So you can look at it in more detail. But the two things that are circled are open house and online survey. So we're in the process of getting that online survey posted. We've got the plans for the open house, which we'll discuss. So in terms of the time, it'll start at 4:30. We'll have a presentation at six o'clock and that presentation, we expect to be relatively short. I would say within the ballpark of about 15 minutes. And I think it's a good opportunity because there are people who learn by reading. There are people who learn by hearing. So this will be an opportunity to review some of the baseline information. We'll have the presentations by a variety of staff members. And afterwards we'll open it up for questions and answers. And then wrap up around 7:30. In terms of the location, as you can see on the bottom slide, is at the extension center. On the next page, slideshow is the, what I call the great hall. So it's the largest room there. That's the room that we will be using. And I'm so grateful that we were able to secure that because it had been reserved by another organization and they gratefully allowed us to do that. So thank you, Tanya, for working that through. Now the microphones for the room are set up to be at the stage. So that is where we'll do the presentations. You can see the room setup. And then around on the perimeter, and this is certainly not to scale. This is just what I could put together quickly. We will have stations. And the idea behind the stations are shown on the next page. On page five, the top slide is the welcome table. That's an example of what we do. We have folks sign in. We get their email addresses if they want to stay engaged and involved in the process. Any surveys or any material that we have will distribute at that session at that point. The bottom of page five, slide number 10, then is an example of another open house where we set up the boards. We'll have probably about 15 or so stations and those will be made up of multiple boards. The boards are an opportunity for folks to walk up to the ones that they're interested in. Some might be interested in glare that could result from this. Others could be interested in landscaping and screening. So they can pick what they want to go to. They can go to all of them if they want. The boards will have information on there. And then they can react and interact. On page six, slide number 11, you'll see a post-it note board. So folks have an opportunity that they'll have post-it notes. They can write out comments. They can post them onto the boards and folks can react to comments that have been posted prior. And it's a way to kind of have an ongoing conversation just as people are popping in and popping out. Slide 12, bottom of page six is an example of how we've done kind of the town hall section. This is a much smaller one shown in the photograph, but will be set up with, we expect to like a stand microphone for members of the audience who want to come up and provide comments. We're working on getting those recorded so that we can get you a transcription. So you'll have that information about the comments that are made. Now, some people are not comfortable when they go to these events, providing comments that members of the public will see. They're not comfortable speaking out loud and that's totally cool. What we have is we'll have a comment form that they can fill out on a clipboard and they can put it into a box in the middle. So therefore we kind of cover a kind of variety of formats, right? At the end of this, on page seven, slide 14, we'll provide a report to, to you and to the planning commission that summarizes what we heard. So here's an example where we've done that for a different open house, but all of the comments that are posted up on post-it notes. We, we write those down, keep them based on the question. And then you've got that information that you can compare to other feedback and input that you're receiving. In terms of awareness of the event, we've got information about it posted on the webpage. My understanding is that we're working on getting Google advertisements paid for as well. And then we're doing emails. We're tagging this on the bottom of every email that we send out from the planning department. And we're working to distribute it to other, other individuals who do planning around the county. And also to get it distributed through the Sedgwick County Association of Cities too, so that the local communities will be aware. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is this considered a quasi judicial process? There, I mean, it's public input, but this is ultimately going to end up in a zoning change potentially and the, the governing officials have to make decisions at some point. I'm just curious about what we're expected, what expected to do here in terms of our participation or non-participation?
Sure. Great question. And I'll defer to Kirk.
Yes, Commissioner Kirk, sponsor of the county councillor. Yes, ultimately this is governed by statute. This ultimately would be considered part of a quasi judicial process. These, this, any potential changes would be approached and analyzed as would be similar to other types of amendments to our unified zoning code, or even to applications for zoning changes, things of that nature.
So with that in mind, do you have any recommendations for us, whether we are at the side or in the room? Or should you just basically wait for the comments to come to us through an official briefing later on? What, 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 what's the recommendation to us?
I would defer to commissioners. I don't have, I don't have set guidelines at this point in time. I would just indicate that as this is quasi judicial, there would ultimately have to be disclosures of who do you communicate with about this, about this scenario, if it were to come in front of you all. I, we can go into further detail about language or things of that nature, specific situations.
Commissioner How, I may add a little bit of a note here on, I think where we're at now, right now is the legislative determination. We're talking big picture on the code. Am I understanding the question correctly there, Commissioner Kirk?
I, I apologize. Yes. I'm sorry about that. I didn't make that distinguishment. The moratorium is a legislative action for further consideration. I take that back. If, if this were ultimately to come to you later down the road as a, as a potential zoning amendment, that's what would be considered in a, in a quasi judicial setting. I think for full disclosure, there should still be mention of conversations had on the topic. But yes, at this saying with the solar moratorium, it was legislative consideration.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I appreciate it. A little more clarification. First of all, at no point are the commissioners expected to speak or to respond or to answer questions or do anything else during this. We're there to listen and, and you all are gathering information then to put together to bring back to us. We are not part of this presentation at all. Correct?
That is correct, sir. I've, I've been to events where they've set up tables to have the elected officials up at the front when they're trying to collect public input. And then it turns into a conversation about stakeholders trying to influence the, the elected official. And so at this point, it's really about collecting the public input. You're certain, you know, depending on what legal's answer is. You're certainly invited to attend and you can observe and see how people are providing comments. But there's no expectation that you would present or be upfront on it.
A couple of things. The invitees, we've got at least two companies, I understand, that possibly may want to put a solar project somewhere in Sedgwick County. Have you formally invited them, let them know about this?
Oh, we know certainly that one of them is because they've been in attendance at the MAPC advanced plans for this has been discussed at least a couple of times. For the other one, I'll make sure personally to send them an email to make sure that they're aware.
And following along with that idea. I think we need to notify the city of Mays and city of Colwich officially of this. So that they know in writing from Sedgwick County that this is happening. They're probably aware of it. But I want to make sure that the leadership in both of those cities are aware of this and possibly down by Hayesville, Clearwater. So make sure that the leadership of the towns or closest to any possible project that we're aware of at this time knows about it. I want to make sure that the communications gets this out often and easy. Get it on our social media and anyplace else so that everyone knows about this. And the other thing, Scott. This starts at 4:30, but again, you showed diagrams of the little stations that they can go to.
Yes, sir.
4:30 to six o'clock is for the people to go around and, and look at the stations and talk to whoever you've got at each one station. Put sticky notes up and so forth. There, there's no presentation. They're official at that point in time.
That's right. That's right. And they will also have that opportunity after the presentation and Q and A, or even during. I know we are riveting presenters, but people may choose to go to the stations instead. So.
Very good. Well, I appreciate it. We put a moratorium on solar specifically to get feedback from the community and for you to be able to look at what else we may need to have in our zoning regulations and legal to take a look at what is happening to make sure that we're doing everything exactly properly. So I, I'm very appreciative that you have overtaken the initiative to get this moving. Because I don't want the moratorium to go beyond six months. I'd like to have everything put together at the end of the six month moratorium rather than having to extend it. Thank you.
I think Justin might have a comment. Well, to Commissioner Dennis's point, I guess, rather than singling out a few of these cities, I think if we have ways to comment all of them. It may not, I mean, I have an interest, but here's the thing. We may be aware of a few that may be impacted by some projects that are on the horizon potential that we're aware of. But I don't think it's fair to, if we're talking about something that may be a future a governing language for our county forever going forward, we ought to invite all of the cities, please to be aware of that.
We use the, use the distribution list first, SCAC.
I agree with that. Thank you.
And the reason that I was very specific, making sure commissioners are not involved in this is we're going to have to make the final decision. And we can't appear that we've got a bias one way or the other up to that point. So I, I don't want the commissioners to be put in a position where someone might say, well, how are you going to vote on this? And we've got to stay out of it completely. We're there to observe, but it is going to go into a very quasi judicial process in the future. And it could end up with litigation at some point. So I want to make sure that our skirts are clean all in every step of the way.
And I completely agree with those comments, Commissioner Dennis. And again, you, I might be the only one that feels this way. But because of that, I, I would encourage our cap, board members to participate in this if they have an opinion. Try to keep this as clean as possible. So we don't have a, anybody to say that we, we, you know, we developed a bias before we got to decision points. So again, for me personally, I'm going to do my best not to, to. I probably won't attend. Not that I don't care. I do. But I just think that I want to keep the process pure personally. So. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis, for those comments. Anybody else? Manager, anything else?
Nope, that's it, sir.
I think we will stand adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.